Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's wonderful to see you all out there. I would now like to call the order of the Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 regular school board meeting of Tuesday, December 9th, 2014. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's call the roll, please.
Meyer.
Here.
Landmark.
Here.
Larkin.
Here.
Bardell.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Great, thanks. As is our custom, our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with support of small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents and unleash their potential and develop tools for lifelong success. The core values in this district are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. On our agenda this evening, we have a special treat. It's my honor to introduce Mr. Alexander Jakes, the director of the Columbia Heights High School Concert Choir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce to you the Columbia Heights High School Concert Choir and our accompanist, Mr. Casey Raffin. This evening, we will be performing Hakuna Mungu Kamawewe, an East African worship song, followed by Shalom Pachampeis, a traditional song, and we'll be closing with Shady Grove, a spirited Appalachian folk song.
Nahataku Eko Nime Tembea. Hakuna Mungu Kamawewe, Hakuna Mungu Kamawewe, Hakuna Mungu Kamawewe, Hakuna Nahataku Eko Nime Tembea. Nime Tembea Kotse Kotse, Ni Gata Futa Kotse Kotse, Ni Kasunkuka Kotse Kotse. Hakuna Nahataku Eko Nime Tembea. Hakuna Kufana Na Na Yesu. Hakuna Kufana Na Na Yesu. Hakuna Kufana Na Na Yesu. Hakuna Nahataku Eko Nime Tembea. Nime Tembea Kotse Kotse, Ni Gata Futa Kotse Kotse, Ni Kasunkuka Kotse Kotse. Hakuna Nahataku Eko Nime Tembea. Hakuna Mungu Kamawewe, Hakuna Mungu Kamawewe, Hakuna Mungu Kamawewe, Hakuna Nahataku Eko Nime Tembea. Nime Tembea Kotse Kotse, Ni Gata Futa Kotse Kotse, Ni Kasunkuka Kotse Kotse. Hakuna Nahataku Eko Nime Tembea. Hakuna Nahataku Eko. Dona Robis Pacham, Pacham, Pacham. Peace be on to you, be on to you, and on to you be peace. Shana Robis Pacham, Pacham, Pacham. Peace be on to you, be on to you, and on to you be peace. Shana Robis Pacham, Pacham, Pacham. Shana be on to you, be on to you, and on to you be peace.
(SINGING) Shady Grove, my love, Shady Grove I know. Shady Grove, my love, bound to go away.
Wish that I had a big fine horse, mornes feed him on. Shady Grove, say at noon, feed him when I'm gone.
Shady Grove, oh Shady Grove.
Shady Grove, my love. Shady Grove, I know.
Oh, Shady Grove.
Shady Grove, my love.
Bound to go away.
Each year's in summertime, and apples in the fall. If I can't get the one I love, I'll find the one that's hard.
Shady Grove, my love.
Shady Grove, I know.
Shady Grove, my love.
Shady Grove, bound to go away.
Shady Grove, my love.
Shady Grove, I know.
Shady Grove, my love.
Shady Grove, bound to go away.
Shady Grove, my love.
Shady Grove, I know.
Oh, Shady Grove, my love.
Shady Grove, bound to go away.
Shady Grove, my love.
Shady Grove, I know.
Oh, Shady Grove, my love.
Shady Grove, bound to go away.
Oh, Shady Grove, my love.
Shady Grove, I know.
Shady Grove, my love.
Bound to go away.
Oh, Shady Grove, my love.
Shady Grove, I know.
Oh, Shady Grove, my love.
Shady Grove, bound to go away.
Oh, Shady Grove, my love.
Shady Grove, I know.
Oh, Shady Grove, my love.
Shady Grove, I know.
Oh, Shady Grove, my love.
Shady Grove, bound to go away.
Wasn't that outstanding?
Yes.
All right. While things get settled here, we're going to go on with our meeting, although it's going to be a little hard to follow that, but the show must go on, right? Our next agenda item this evening is agenda approval adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda this evening?
No motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by John, second by Missy. Any discussion on the agenda this evening? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, and that motion is carried. Announcements, December 24th through January 4th, no school, it's winter break. January 6th, Tuesday, 8:00 PM is the board organizational meeting here in the community room. January 13th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM is the regular school board meeting here in the community room. January 19th, Monday, there is no school, that is Martin Luther King Jr. holiday. January 20th, Tuesday, 5:00 PM, school board listening session in the family center foyer. January 2nd, Tuesday, 6:00 PM, school board work session here in the community room. January 23rd, Friday, no school, it's a district and service day. January 26th, Monday, no school, it's a district grading day. January 27th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM is the regular school board meeting here in the community room. Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence this evening?
Mr. Chair members, there's none at this time.
Very good, thank you. Next on our agenda is communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. However, the board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Does anyone like to speak to the board tonight? All right, going once, twice. All right, we will move on, thanks. Our next agenda item is the consent agenda. This evening, the consent agenda consists of meetings of the November 18th and 25th school board meetings, and the November 13th special call meeting, personnel report, and the treasurer's report for October 2014. Do I have a motion to move the consent agenda forward?
Move that forward. Second.
Motion by Missy, second by Lori. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion is carried. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the acknowledgement of contributions. This is a resolution. Do I have a motion to move it forward?
So long.
Second. Motion by Ted, second by John. As I'll read the resolution quickly, as quick as I can. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purchase, and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the school board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13 that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $12,954.50. Monetary donations, a donation of $75 is made to Columbia Heights Activities Department by Columbia Heights Athletic Booster Club for supplies for the bowling team. A donation of $5,000 was made to the Columbia Heights Activities Department by the Columbia Heights Athletic Booster Club for the New York study session. A donation of $2,000 was made to Columbia Heights Activities Department by the Columbia Heights Athletic Booster Club for the baseball team. A donation of $1,038.50 was made to Columbia Heights Activities Department by the Columbia Heights Athletic Booster Club for gymnastic team equipment. A donation of $3,955 was made to Columbia Heights Activities Department by the Columbia Heights Athletic Booster Club for football team supplies and equipment. Following donations were made to Valley View Elementary for student needs through the Give to the Max campaign. Kraus Anderson Construction, $250. Jeff Serna House, $100. Becky Burkalo, $25. Jenny Paxton, $25. Mariel and Jeff Borowitz, $50. Susan Billings, $25. Daniel Smith, $20. Kamari Hauglid, $25. Neil Grandland, $50. Rachel Folkerson, $10. Doran Schorpick, $25. James Duffy, $25. Northeast State Bank, $100. Anonymous, $50. Valium Kind, donation of 28 pairs of pants and personal hygiene products to Columbia Academy from Catherine Chanley, estimated value of $106. Total fiscal year 2014-2015 monetary contributions to date, $29,815.36. Call the roll, please.
Meyer.
Aye.
Landmark.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Bardell.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
And the resolution has passed. Thank you very much.
All right. At this time, it's reports from members of the board. Board members can report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. I'm going to start with John this evening.
In the interest of keeping things moving, we have lots of people waiting. I have nothing to report at this time.
All right. Ted?
Just quickly, I attended the MSBA delegate assembly this weekend, and most of the resolutions that we, the district, supported, I think, passed, so we should be in good shape there for lobbying at the legislature. And then also attended a WMAP executive committee meeting.
All right, thank you. Lori?
I too attended the MSBA delegate assembly this past weekend, and that's it for this time.
All right, thanks. Laura?
I attended the 9/16 board meeting, but I'd like to actually report out at that and next board, at our next board meeting.
Okay, thanks. Missy?
I also attended the delegate assembly, and I also had a state board meeting prior for several hours, and with a lot of discussion on the actual resolutions, also some really good discussion regarding some of the districts, but I did want to say again that people are really talking about Columbia Heights, and we have a really wonderful reputation out there, and it's statewide. I was asked by three members on that board if they could come through and tour the facilities and see what's happening and what, actually, what the magic is here. And I, you know, basically said that they could contact the schools, and they're really interested in, right now, in Valley View and some of the things that have been, good things that are happening there. But I just, I really, I gotta, I gotta say, I've never been prouder than I was at that meeting, when you have people sitting around statewide and talking about Columbia Heights and what a great district this is, and the things that are happening, and the great, mainly what the great kids that we have here, so. Also, I attended the city council meeting last night. I wanted, I attended it basically because Tammy Diem is retiring from the council, so I wanted to be sure to congratulate her and wish her well. She has done a great service to this city, and she has also done a great service to this district. She's been continually supportive and always been there. She's got great kids that graduated through Columbia Heights. If you get an opportunity to text her or email her, do, and wish her good luck in her retirement. It was a really nice meeting and long, but nice meeting, and congratulations, Tammy Diem.
All right, thank you. I'll just briefly mention, I attended the MSD meeting, and a couple of points, MSD's platform is going to ask for at least a 4% increase in the formula per year, and the other talk was on effective legislative advocacy, and what you need to know about that is, if you really want to be effective in advocacy for the folks down in St. Paul, be on social media and know how to use Twitter. Those were the takeaways. With that, Superintendent Kelly.
Mr. Chair members, I'll be brief as well, but there's a few things to note. The Columbia Heights District Data Team did meet once again to study district data in order to close the achievement gap and to develop strategies. I'll report more out about that in 2015. Licensed Labor Management met to discuss issues of joint concerns, and there was a focus on the reserve teacher shortage, which seems to be a persistent problem. We discussed professional development and parking, and this group will meet again in February. I would like the board to know that Director Holmgren and Hanniganz and I continued to meet on Mondays on the, to develop a plan, an operational plan, on the dispersment of the newly acquired levy funds, and so what we'd like to do for the community is make sure they know at a year at a time where we are spending the money, and so we'd like to report that back out to the board as information starting in February. And there was a joint admin and meeting with the Columbia Heights Police Department, and this is of note because the focus was on data privacy and data sharing, and Chief Nado will be joining us in February because they were part of an initial pilot for body cams, and starting in February, all the police will be wearing body cam video equipment, and that will include in our schools, and so the chief would like to explain what that will lock us on, and we can talk more about it at that time, so I wanted to let you know that was coming. In this room last night, the District Finance Committee chaired by Director Holmgren met, and we went over the district audit, and Larry Petrac has for years chaired that committee, and he did once again last night, and I mention it because Larry Petrac, who is another one of the pillars of our fabric of our community, is retiring from the bank this month, and his last day will be December 17th. But there is an open house at Northeast Bank on Friday, December 11th, from 1:00 to 4:00. And so those of you that know Larry or have had contact with him, he certainly has supported our schools, feel free to drop in there. He is so gracious that he has, in retirement, said that he will chair our finance meeting through the end of this school year, but he doesn't promise he'll always wear a suit to the meetings. Having said that, that concludes my report for tonight.
All right, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is another very fun, exciting topic. We get to honor our tenured, new-tenured teachers. So with that, I would like Director Bennett and Director Burkus will share with the board licensed faculty newly tenured in the district as of July 1st, 2014.
Chair Bardell, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, tonight we get to recognize 16 of our teachers that achieved tenure this July 1st, 2014. We have most of them here in attendance tonight, and before we call them up, Director Burkus is going to say a little bit about achieving tenure. We'll have each of the principals or directors speak about their staff, and then I'll call them up to receive their certificate from the board.
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, if it's okay with you, I'll face this way, but I've got a few words for our tenured teachers, so this is for you. Congratulations on reaching a major milestone in your career as a teacher, receiving tenure from Columbia Heights Public Schools. Evaluation system in Columbia Heights requires non-tenured teachers to be observed by their administrative team three times a year in four specific domains: planning, classroom environment, instruction, and other professional responsibilities. By achieving tenure, your supervisors have, through direct observation and consultation, determined that you have the knowledge, teaching skills, work habits, and commitment that are needed to successfully impact the academic achievement of our students. This is a decision that building and district administrators have weighed carefully, knowing that granting tenure is a decision of long-term investment by the district in you as a teacher. Superintendent Kelly reminds us on an annual basis that this is a million-dollar decision, and that it is the quality of our teachers that will largely determine the level of success achieved by our students and our district as a whole. Each of you has proven through a rigorous system of evaluation that you are indeed that long-term investment we want to make for our students. So again, congratulations on the honor professionals in your field of education have now bestowed on you, for tenure is indeed an honor and one that comes with responsibility. Tenure provides a certain level of security, a rare thing indeed in our world today, but is built on the assumption that a professional will continue to strive for excellence, that you, as a professional, will continue to strive for excellence in your work through a lifelong commitment to learning that will require an openness to change in order to continuously improve your skills as a teacher. In addition, tenure comes with the responsibility of remaining committed to practicing the same life skills that we expect our students to apply in our classrooms, such as persistence, collaboration, communication, and integrity. You are now a tenured teacher in Columbia Heights Public Schools. We are proud of you and grateful that you have chosen to work in our district. We hope that you will stay a long, long time.
Are they going to come up later?
Welcome up after.
Okay, Kelsey Baxter, math teacher. She teaches 7th grade daily math, uses flipped instruction by posting assignments on School ogy. She exhibits fairness and patience towards students, has excellent rapport with students, parents, and colleagues. Next is Maureen Riley, teaches 6th grade reading, also Read 180, builds positive relationships with her students, and provides a solid, engaging curriculum. We have Allison Humple, is a, she's a member of our leadership team, she's not here tonight, coordinates our Operation College Bound after-school program, and she is an excellent English-language arts teacher at 7th grade. Can we do the rest of that? Okay. All right, we have Rochelle Look at Valley View, kindergarten teacher. She facilitated a region-level math project for our K-2 teachers last year, has co-facilitated our academic committee for two years, has been asked to serve on several key district planning committees. And last, I believe for me, is Stephanie Carker. She's currently a 3rd grade teacher. She's taught at kindergarten, 1st grade, and this is her 2nd year at 3rd grade. She's done an excellent job at all grade levels.
I'm pleased to have here with us this evening Jake Henderson. He is the leader and the rock that has supported the Achieve program from the beginning through this year. He's a wonderful math teacher. He's got a great background in science, social studies, social skills, he pretty much does it all. He's great with the kids, he's very relational, and we're glad that he has been with us this entire time at Achieve. Chloe Bluth is a special education teacher at Columbia Academy. She is an exceptional young woman. When we needed her because of the young staff at Columbia Academy to step up to the plate and be the department chair even before she was tenured, sorry, HR, don't tell them that. She stepped up and took the leadership of a more mature teacher at a very young age, and she's delightful with the children and runs a wonderful, wonderful program at the academy. Kim Anderson was originally an art teacher, came to us from Ohio, and fell in love with working with kids in the transition program, and she's our transition teacher at the high school, and does exceptional work with them in life skills, training them for career and college-ready, and beautiful, beautiful artwork. If you would like to purchase some, I'll put a plug in, some pictures, they take photography lessons out at Silverwood, the transition students, under Kim's direction, and they have beautiful cards. Superintendent Kelly and I Superintendent Kelly and I purchase them every year. And last but not least here with us this evening is Sarah Kessler. And we are so fortunate to have Sarah here. She started with us as a student teacher through the Terry Program. Exceptional, strong, strong teacher in our early childhood special ed programming. She's delightful, she's calm, she's sweet, and we are so happy that she has received tenure with us. Two that are not able to be with us this evening, Angela Jacobson is an exceptional school psychologist. She currently is at Columbia Academy. And Cassie Schmick is at Early Childhood Special Ed. So I have a big group and I'm very proud.
I have three teachers from Highland receiving tenure this evening. First is Kelsey Lehman. She's currently a 1st grade teacher at Highland. She started as a kindergarten teacher. She's exceptional with children. She also develops very strong relationships with their families. She has taken on the role of Rising Stars teacher, which is the small version of Destination Imagination. She also has been integral in our leadership with mathematics at Highland. Next is Rhonda Lingan and she is currently a K-2 Spanish teacher at Highland. She is credited with writing the entire Spanish curriculum that we use now at Highland and Valley View. She started at Highland as an EL teacher. So she has many talents and expertise. We're very glad that she came to join us. And last, unable to make it this evening is Carol Paterka, is a physical education teacher at Highland and also the girls' basketball coach. And I would guess that that's probably where she is tonight, is coaching girls' basketball. Thank you.
It's a privilege to talk about two of the best teachers at North Park tonight. First, we have Ariann Strom. Ariann is an EL teacher in 4th grade. She's a member of our leadership team. She is also one of the leaders on our equity team. In fact, she led our staff meeting in our equity learning this afternoon. Additionally, she is also helping to develop the 4th grade learning studio, which is being implemented this year. Also, I have Alyssa Isaacs. Alyssa Isaacs is another member, young member of our leadership team at North Park. She came to us four years ago, or three, well, four years ago in her 2nd year at North Park, she helped to develop the 2nd grade learning studio, which was the beginning of it all for us. And she has taken many of those principles and instructional strategies into her 4th grade classroom and continues to be a shining example of what we are looking for at North Park.
So now we'll call them up one by one and have them receive their certificate from the board.
First honoree this evening, Jake Henderson. This is to recognize and signify that Jake, you have achieved with Stassa tenure with Columbia Heights Public Schools, July 1st, 2014. Our next honoree this evening for achieving tenure as of July 1st is Kelsey Baxter. Our next honoree this evening is Kim Anderson. Our next honoree this evening, Kelsey Lehman. Our next newly tenured teacher, Alyssa Isaacs. We'll, we'll save your certificate for you, Alyssa. Our next recipient, next newly tenured teacher, Ariann Strom. One more round of a hand for our newly tenured teachers. Congratulations. I would also like to remind you, you're not obligated to stay for the rest of the meeting. You won't hurt anyone's feelings. We know you probably have other things that you need or want to do, so we really appreciate you being here and congratulations once again. Yeah, we do have a truth and taxation meeting later. All right. Yeah. That was very nice. Yep. All right. Next in our agenda, we have the topic of West Metro Education Program. And I believe we have Mr. Keith Lester, the Superintendent of WMEP up here this evening with us.
Well, this is going to be anticlimactic.
Sorry about that.
It's all right. It's all right. It was a treat to be here for this. So, Board members and Superintendent Kelly, thank you for having me. It's an honor. This is my 6th board meeting that I've gone to of member districts. And I've always only gone, obviously, to the districts where I've worked, so it's been fun to see the difference in how things are done. And I'm never cease to be amazed and impressed with how people do, how they do business. So I'm glad I'm here. What I'm here to do tonight is to report to you what, what's going on at WMEP and then get, take questions if you may have them, and then you can take that from there in terms of your discussion. That's, that's fine.
For the camera.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Anyhow, so what happened is, is I was hired in, to begin on July 1st, to take over as interim superintendent at WMEP. And my job was, one, to run the school district, if you will, as the superintendent, but also to help guide the discussion around what the structure of WMEP should be for the future. I tell people that my job is to do the job of being superintendent while I'm trying to figure out what the job actually is. And that's kind of where it's going. And that, and I think that's where, where it will, will land is we'll make some decisions on what this position is and everything else that WMEP does. So the, the board had a work session on October 8th and they've been providing information as time has gone on. But at the work session, they, they did a number of things, but they began with looking at the mission of WMEP. And if you look at the handout, I'm assuming you have that in front of you.
We do.
And, and you can see the mission and I, and I would just highlight that there are two main parts to it. And obviously, those two main parts make up the entire mission, but they were critical to this, to the discussion about, about WMEP. One is that they are to build collective capacity to achieve the work that we're doing, educational excellence and racial equity, and that we are to serve the 100,000-plus students and staff that make up the member districts. So those were, those are the two main pieces in doing the work of equity, in doing the work around integration, doing the, the work of WMEP. And WMEP is an integration district. That's what we were created for, was around that, that notion. And so those were the main parts. So we looked at the four elements of the vision, which were regional equity leadership, the fair school. And I say fair school, it's two buildings, but they're considered one. So because it's K-3 downtown, 912 downtown, and then 48 at Crystal. So it's the fair school. Staff development, the third element, and that's the cultural collaborative, and then student programs. So they asked a number of questions and I won't get into that with you. I'm going to try to move as quickly because I know you have other business to do tonight. But the, the one question was, does it serve the mission of WMEP? And remember the two parts. It's collective capacity to do the work and serving the 100,000-plus students. And when they looked at regional equity leadership, they determined that in itself, it did not. But through the work we do in professional development, it does. So, so the answer to that question is no, it doesn't. But professional development, and I'll get to that. The next one was the fair school. Fair school has 953 students. And when you're talking about serving 100,000-plus students, that's a pretty small percentage. So the, along with the fact that our districts have changed, all of our member districts, Richfield and Columbia Heights and Brooklyn Center, where I retired from, we look more like Minneapolis and Minneapolis, if you will, if I can put it that way. You know, more diverse, more higher needs students in a lot of different areas. And so the times have changed and has WMEP changed along with it. So the determination was, no, it doesn't serve the mission. The, the school does not serve the mission. Doesn't mean the schools shouldn't be there, doesn't mean the schools don't have a place, but probably not as a part of WMEP. That's the general discussion. Now, keep in mind, the board, the Joint Powers Board has to make a decision. And some of that, you know, I'm, I'm sure Ted is relying on, you know, your will in terms of where he votes when it comes time to, to make that decision. But they looked at other options too, and are looking at other options. They had a study done by Ken Dragseth and Tony Johns, who are retired superintendents. And they came back and said, and they had seven options. The first five were the same one, essentially, and that is, WMEP would run the schools, but we would change the, the configuration of the administration. I call that rearranging the deck chairs. I think that's a, one way to look at it. It's the same thing you have now, but you've got different leadership, different people in different places. The, the sixth one was what they called the 287 option, but you could call that the outsource, the management option. 287 is your 916. It's the intermediate district that serves primarily special education areas. And could they run the, the schools? Could they manage the schools on behalf of, of WMEP? There was another part to it, then there was another one saying 287 could absorb WMEP and then it would be, all of the work of WMEP would be done, the, all of the equity work and everything would be done as a part of 287. Now, they're still discussing that, but I would say that option is kind of hanging out there for a lot of reasons. One, if you aren't going to manage, maybe you shouldn't add another layer of bureaucracy to the, to the process. I don't think anybody wants to give up the opportunity to do the service of equity and integration through WMEP, even though we wouldn't have the schools. And so to, to give up and say 287, you become WMEP, wasn't necessarily a desirable option either. But has been on the table. The last option, Dragseth and Johns said it was, we'd been calling it the Purpich option. Emid had two schools, same kind of deal, and I think you guys are probably closer to hearing about that than a lot of people on the far west end. But Emid, East Metro Integration District, had two schools and they didn't want to run the schools anymore. So they went to the member districts and they said, would you like to take over those schools? Roseville, where the elementary building sat, said, yes ma'am, yes sir, let's do it. South Washington County, where Crosswinds sat, the 6 through 10 or 6 through, yeah, I think it's 6 through 10 building sat, said, we do, but we don't want to run an integration school. And the, the spirit for maintaining them as integration schools was strong, one, because that's what the board thought, but also because the legislature was not going to allow them to convey those buildings if they weren't going to be integration schools. If I, I know I haven't mentioned it, the, the schools belonged to Emid, these schools belonged to WMEP, but if you try to sell them or give them away, any proceeds go to the state. Because the state paid for the buildings, the state is paying off the buildings. If we were to sell the buildings for $2 million, nobody gets to keep any money. So if any of you were thinking that that was coming, afraid not. However, there is money in deferred maintenance that would probably be divided between the districts or dealt with in some way. So anyhow, South Washington County didn't want to do it. You can't run a school, a school district or a school in another district. So they went to the Purpich School for the Arts because they aren't a regular school district. And they said, would you like to do it? Created some problems, the legislature couldn't get their heads around what Purpich was doing there, but they eventually got through it. And so the, the final option that Dragseth and Johns suggested was basically a conveyance of the school, or schools, to Purpich and Roseville's district. So that's, that is the, probably the most active option on the table right now at WMEP. That Minneapolis and Robinsdale, where Fair Crystal sits, that's kind of a dead giveaway, Fair Crystal, where they sit, those would be the two districts that would take over the, the buildings if we went that route. So I would add, and you can see on here, but the schools were originally there because of integration, that I, and I alluded to the fact that we have different needs right now. And they were supposed to be lab schools. And your teachers, other teachers were going to go there, teach, come back to your districts and tell them how it, how it's done. One, they stopped doing that. Two, as I mentioned, you've got people here that know how it's done because they had, they had to because you changed. And you made those changes. You continue to get training, you continue to get, do the work around equity and cultural competence and the like, but your needs aren't necessarily being met through the schools. The third area, staff development, cultural collaborative. I would have to say, in my opinion, before I came back to WMEP as a I would have to say, in my opinion, before I came back to WMEP as a, as interim superintendent, I thought this was the shining star for WMEP. It's the one thing they did, they did everything well, don't get me wrong. The schools are good schools, the regional leadership, whatever level they were doing, was good. But the cultural collaborative was really solid, solid training. And thousands of teachers have been trained in a number of different areas. And so, when they analyzed that, they said, well, yes, it is collective capacity because we're all going there and we're working. And because all these teachers are being taught, they're learning, and going back to their district, they're impacting more students. So, the, the conversation around the cultural collaborative or staff development was, yes, it meets the mission, but is there a better way? Is there a better, better model? And if you can envision a, a professional development training center, and this is a term that came from the superintendents, they've been meeting regularly, and they said, you know, let's, let's make this so that it's more comprehensive, let's make this so this actually touches our districts. And, and, and I'm gonna give you a vision that I've taken from that, that may never come to fruition, and it doesn't matter. I'll go back to being retired soon, so it won't make a bit of difference. Missy and I will do that. I, I should mention, Missy and I, when I was the superintendent rep on the WMEP board, we sat together, and she was a terrible influence on me. No, hold it, I was a terrible in- I'm sorry, I was a terrible influence on her.
Might have been a little bit of a mixture there.
No, that's right, I'm sorry, I got that confused.
What was it that I was the rose?
The rose, you were the rose and I was the thorn.
Thank you, there we go.
But, where was I, now? Okay. But, but the vision that I, that I would have or offer is, what if, if you could go, if, if, one, you could say, this is a training we need. And WMEP would, would find the components that you need, work with you, work with any other districts that want the same training, provide the training, have the people at this center that would do the training, give you controlled practice so that you could get better at it, then go back with you to your districts. And I don't mean that literally, I mean, they would, they would come back at some point and help you and coach you and guide you in doing that work. And then they would help you create community between those of you who have been trained in your district and across districts. Can you see the integration happening here? All of that happening, supporting, and then helping the administrators so that they understand what's happening and how to support it. And then helping you so that you know what, what the basis needs to be in order to make that happen. Lots of other opportunities from within that. But that was kind of the, not kind of, that was the notion the superintendents talked about in terms of taking professional development to the next level. And there are a lot of areas that that can go into, teachers of color, something as basic as book studies and, and all that kind of thing also. So, they felt that there were strengths in numbers and being able to keep that together and to do the work. I would add at this point that it appears that at, at Emid, and this is not a criticism, but it, from the, we met with one of the superintendents who said, this was about the money. People were contributing large amounts of money to Emid to support Emid programming. And keep in mind, justice, WMEP is not all schools, it's all this other stuff, professional development, for example. They were saying, no, this is, this is a concern, this money should be back so we can work with it in our districts. I have to tell you, and maybe you will like this or not, but I really like it, that our superintendents have been around the table saying, this is about equity, this is about integration, and this is about doing the work that we're supposed to be doing. So, while the superintendents certainly support the conveyance option, I think that's a safe way to pay, to put it, Superintendent Kelly, support that option, they're not supporting it because they don't want to pour that money into it, because they're talking about wanting to support something that will be more effective and be more far-reaching. And so, they also thought that it served the mission, and that it'll be, it would be an, an important thing to continue. The last part were, which should be a four on here, it says a three, there are two threes, student programs. And those are, and I know you've had Elder's Wisdom Children's Song in your district. I think you've got a Dare to Be Real program going, or have you not, you know?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, Dare to Be Real is, is a, a program that is, has been put together through WMEP that brings kids together to talk about race. So, you'd have students of color and white students talking about race in a, in an organized manner, and then allows them to develop leadership skills in that area. It's broadening, most of the member districts have it, a number of other districts have picked it up, including St. Paul. And I found out recently that it's gone national. And as impressive as that might sound, it's gone national at about four districts out there across the country. So, it's not like, spreading like wildfire. But the fact that it is being acknowledged, it's kind of as you were saying about Columbia Heights, you know, that people are seeing what a, what a gem you have in your district, you know? There are things that WMEP is recognized for, too, and Dare to Be Real certainly is one of them. There are also something called the Elite Academy. And elite actually means something other than what the word means, and I can't tell you what it is right now. But the intention was to help develop teachers of color by having a summer program, an intensive summer program, and that was it. So, the, the idea moving forward be, would be, how can we assist in having our high school students start looking at becoming educators, and especially our students of color, but also our education assistants, other people who work in the districts that aren't licensed? And how do we support all of that, which would be beneficial to all of us, as you know? And then the last program we have is the partnership program. And that's one that's called Fair Plus Downtown, and it's called After School Matters at, at Crystal, although it's not as active as a partnership, where we partner with industry, and then students actually work in those industries, they develop skills in those industries, actually get internships in those industries. We have a number of students that have participated at architectural firms. I'm probably not gonna name half of them, but Target is a, is a real strong partner. And it's, interestingly enough, this is a program that, that, I don't know if it started in, in the Kansas City area, but has, has really caught out, caught on in a district in that, in, in the Kansas City area, where they're reaching out, and they're actually, the story I hear is that they're not even having to build as many high schools because there's so much of the opportunities that are happening outside of the buildings for students to actually go out into the buildings and, and do their learning elsewhere. And Fair Plus Downtown, the Downtown School, has been doing these partnerships for several years. Minnetoka has bought into the Kansas City model, and it's not Kansas City, it's a district outside of Kansas City, hook, line, and sinker. They've got a huge program. If you go to their site and look up their Vantage Program, it is an extensive approach to the same thing. So, that's another program that we have that can reach across districts, reach into your districts, and support your kids and your, and your programs. So, those are the four components. And they felt that student programs also serve the mission. In different areas, in, it will serve different age groups, it'll serve a broader audience in some areas and, and a narrow audience in, in others. So, where they're at now is, they have a meeting tomorrow night, and they're gonna look at more data that has been put together by, either by me, or by the superintendents, or subcommittees that we've formed. And from that, they'll start developing communication, well, developing a communication plan. One, to reach out to staff so they understand what happens to the staff in this case, and so that we reach out to the community, to the families, to the students, so they understand what's going on. Because their goal, if we convey the schools, is a soft landing. And that's a term that some people are confused about, but I see all the nodding heads, so I don't think you're confused at all. It means, as Minneapolis has said, new landlord, same tenants. Roseville, when they took over, they took all the teachers, they took all, all of the, all of the employees, they ran the same programs. And, and John Tyne at Roseville made the comment one time when we were at a meeting, he said, we've got parents that still don't know that Emid isn't running the school anymore. That's the ideal. Whether we achieve that same thing, the idea is, parents still have access to it, as long as the districts want their parents to have access to it. Employees, tenured teachers have job security. Most other employees, non, uh, non-licensed employees have, have some assurance, by law, about jobs. They have to be integration schools, so all of those pieces are part of the soft landing. So, if they proceed by January or no later than February, the beginning of February, they would vote on what to do about the schools. Today, again, the leaning is toward the conveyance option, and that'll be up to you to discuss what message you want to convey about which, which option. And I don't, really don't mean to try to sell you one way or another, and I know I talked more about conveyance. But right now, as we've evolved through this, that's probably the, the strongest option that's out there. So, they'll, they'll make a decision, and actually, if it were made quickly enough, there would be an attempt to bring it to the legislature for their approval in this session. But it would have to move, as you know, pretty quickly, because the legislature doesn't move quickly. Questions? You guys seem like you know what you need to know, so.
We've been fortunate to have information brought back from two different directions, so we've had discussions previous to tonight, so it's not brand new for us.
Great. Well, I'm glad to hear you were talking about it, because there are some where I've gone where this was the first time they really heard much. I went to a district, and I won't say where, that I had, I spent the first 20 minutes explaining what WMEP was. So, you know, it's, you know, it's a newer board, so they didn't know, they, they just didn't, because they hadn't had a chance to, to get to know it. So, it's been exciting. There's a lot of, there are a lot of great things that are happening in the schools. I think they can continue to happen in the schools, they don't necessarily have to be run by WMEP. I continue to be impressed with professional development, and many of those student programs, I think, are outstanding. And will be pleased to help lead them in that direction. Missy?
I, I'd like to just say thank you very much for coming and giving us this presentation. And you are right, we do know a lot about West Metro, I sat on the board for 10 years, so I, and when you talk about what, you know, that you had to explain, I, I think some of the things that we need to think about is what was and what is right now, and which are two totally different things for WMEP. I'm, I'm a strong believer that, that things have really changed there, and that, that I agree with the soft landing, I think that would be, you know, something that we need to look at. But I strongly support the things that you've said tonight, and I do really appreciate it, and I've looked for, I, I appreciate the times we spent together, because we spent a lot of years on that board together, so.
Yep.
Thank you very much for that, for that work, the service you did, so.
And, and you also, if I may. I mean, I really did enjoy sitting next to, I learned a lot from her. I really did. So, I, congratulations on your retirement, I think that's wonderful.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, I do. I sat right between him and his board member, that's why it was the room between the two things.
So, that way we would all get along.
Yeah. No, I, I appreciate it very much, thank you.
Yep.
All right.
Looks like we're good. Thank you very much, Superintendent Lester, we really appreciate you coming out.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right. Next on our agenda is Building Vision Card from North Park Elementary. You said Jeff, only 90 minutes?
I'm gonna do my best to meet your expectations.
Thank you. He's, he's kidding.
And mine.
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, yes, pleased to be here tonight with Principal Sasek and Dean Sterm from North Park Elementary. We all know that great things have been happening over at North Park, in their recognition that the world's changing fast, especially in the area of technology. And as a result, the way our students learn, the way our students interact, changes with that, is changing with that. And so, I think North Park has really been a leader in our district in recognizing that education, the world of education, has to adjust to our changing world, or we just simply will not be relevant to our students' lives. So, the innovation that's going on at North Park, I believe, is a great example of the kind of work that it's going to take us as a, as a field to make sure that we don't get left behind, and that our kids are so far in front of us that teaching them is, is simply not as effective as it should be, because we've not made those adjustments. So, I think, again, as in previous times, I want to salute this administrative team, their teachers, their kids, for the courage that it takes to step out and do things that are different. Neither, it's not a direct line to success in anything, engineering, and it's a lot like the engineering that they teach. It's an iterative process where you adjust based on what you learn. And I think that takes courage to hold to what you're trying to do, while at the same time making those smart adjustments that will get you what, where you want to be. So, very pleased to be able to just say that at the very start here, to be able to have Principal Sasek and Dean Sterm here to tell us about the work, the good work that continues to go on at North Park this year. Thanks.
Thanks, Director Burkas, very kind. Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, good evening.
Good evening.
We'll begin, of course, with our mission, which I know you're all quite aware, as well as our core values. The next slide is the North Park enrollment. You can see, while we have had a bit of a dip this year, we still are up significantly from the 2010-11 school year when we were at 423 students. Last year, we topped out at 512. This year, as of today, we're at 489, due by and large to a small kindergarten class, which I know is something we're seeing across the district. It seems that our census was quite a lot lower than it has been in years past. Next year, it looks like our census is back up to, to previous years' numbers. Our demographics, when you look at our free and reduced lunch, 80% of our students qualify, 70% is free lunch, 10% reduced. EL and Special Ed, 13.1% of our students are special, receive special education services, and 36.3% of our students are fortunate enough to speak languages other than English at home. If you look at our AYP data, this is something, of course, that we've covered at previous meetings, we did see an unexpected dip this year in both reading and math, and a slight dip in science, but not much. And it's something that was a bit of a surprise, and we're not gonna have any surprises this year. We intend to be back up to where we should be. Strategic roadmap, I know you're all aware of this, I always like to point out strategic directions A and B. I like turbocharging, and I know the North Park staff is certainly quite innovative. So, as we take a look at the strategic plan scorecard and turbocharging, 100% of our teachers in classrooms are using articulated standards-based curriculum. And of course, we're at the progressive, progressing level for PLCs, with around 80% of our teachers participating at least monthly in PLCs. And next, we have presence of 21st century learning in the, in the fourth area there, we're about 85%. We still have a couple of classrooms that we're working with to, to get up to speed, but we have moved a lot more quickly than we had anticipated. We are at the vision level with implementation of STEAM. It's happening across grade levels at North Park. And then our next section, if you look at our MAP growth in the area of math, we are at a baseline area there. We had 62% of our students met their growth goals in math. We are in an area of concern with reading last year, because we had fewer students. We had around 50% of our students that were meeting their, their learning goals. And if you look at our MCAs, we, of course, have covered both reading and math, and we are at areas of intervention, and we are certainly intervening. Our science scores are still at vision, as they have been for many years now, with the help of a wonderful science specialist, Stan Maroz. And which brings us to our SMART goals. And we have adopted the district SMART goals for MCA growth. We see absolutely no reason that our students will not make a 10% increase in both mathematics and reading on MCAs this year. We've certainly identified some areas of weakness in our text, testing strategies and preparations last year, and we've remedied them. And we're now practicing with the OPA, so I know Dean Sterm could probably spend about an hour talking to you about that, but I don't think she will. Next, on our SMART goals, last year, our number of referrals to the Time to Think Room decreased by 15%, and we'd like to see at least another decrease by 10%. Currently, our entire staff, being led by our equity team, is also looking at whom exactly is being sent out, because there's also a gap there. If you look because there's also a gap there, if you look at our cells and our ethnic cells and so on. And it is our goal to be at least in the progressing column in that area next year. So it brings us back to the strategic roadmap. So now it's, it's time to talk about some of the more innovative things that are happening at North Park. This past year, our major implementation, the 13-14 school year, was project-based learning. We were fortunate enough with the support of Director Burkus and his department to bring in the Buck Institute from California over the summer of 2013, to come in and, and Kristi, who is our consultant, spent three days training our entire staff on project-based learning. And so again, it's something we saw implemented last year, and we're seeing a lot of growth in that area this year. And it is something that is very congruent with 21st century learning, we found. And at this point, I'm going to pass some thing, pass it over to Dean Sturm so she can talk about these wonderful teachers that you see pictures of right now.
Good evening. Yeah, actually, we have a double here. Scott Larson is on the Teacher of the Year wall, and he's also on the left side of the slide there. So just want to point out that Mr. Larson, as well as then Meredith Schaefer and Carolyn Teichner on the right, had the opportunity to be at the TIES conference yesterday and today. Scott Larson, because he's being recognized as a TIES Exceptional Teacher of the Year, of which we are thoroughly, thoroughly proud. For those of you who might not know, Scott Larson teaches in our Setting 3 DCD program, and he is utterly fired up about using technology with his students, and it's just so much fun to be a part of. Mrs. Schaefer and Mrs. Teichner presented today a session called "A Day in the Life of the 21st Century Learning Studio", and when I checked this morning, they had more than 50 attendees planned to be there. And I know that Principal Sasek received a text indicating that there were some folks who've been through our building on tours who participated in their session and were also able to offer firsthand feedback. So that was really fun for us to hear. By way of highlighting just a little bit of what's happening at North Park, this is a slide taken straight from one of Mr. Larson's presentations that he recently gave to special ed teachers across the state of Minnesota. And on his slide, he lets folks know that, about vlogging, which is video logging, for those of you new to that word. And for him, it takes, he broke it down and realized that it takes 27 steps to capture a video and get that video posted onto a student vlog page. So his students are engaging in these 27 steps that are required. And I love his second bullet point there. Guess who used to do this for hours and hours and hours on the weekend? Probably the guy on the top here. And then he has a link that we'll, we'll share with you. It's just a quick minute to show that he, in fact, never has to do it anymore. The self-talk that goes on in my own head when the wheel spins is, "We teach kids to be flexible with technology, to be patient with technology, so we'll practice the same." They don't love hearing that, but it's just another opportunity for us to practice our patience. And when it doesn't work at all, we move on, right? Unless, of course, we break it, in which case...
You can't break computers by pushing the buttons. I learned that. Now I suppose we could act out the video blog that...
Apologies for that, you're missing something pretty good, so I apologize for that content that looks like we won't be able to see tonight. In any case, we are pretty thrilled that Mr. Larson did, in fact, receive the TIES Exceptional Teacher of, for this year, award for the work that he is doing with his students at North Park, so apologies. It's really fun. It just shows Hamza talking about the things that he's afraid of. His charge was to talk about what he's afraid of, and being verbally articulate is something that we want all of our students to be accomplished at doing, and he exhibits it very well. He's afraid of cats and dogs, just so you know, and we're cats.
And zombies. Next, we'd like to talk just a little bit about some Wilder Research that has been done in the last year. As you know, we contracted with the help of Director Burkus through Wilder Research to develop a logic model and to do some evaluation of our programming of the learning studios. So in 2014, Wilder, Kristen from Wilder, she had eight key informant interviews with teachers, two two-hour observations, and she also received 71 online surveys from students and 41 online and paper surveys from parents. To complete a little bit of this information, we're just going to give you a snippet of.
So something that's been really important to us, of course, is reflecting on our map data, our MCA data, as Principal Sasek shared with you before and in previous meetings. And something that we feel like we also need to look at quantifying are those other things that we do at North Park and that we brag about and have so very much fun doing. And in an effort to, to show that what we're doing is worth doing, what we're doing is working, we have some information from both students and parents to share. So in this report, 96% of our students identified that they do, in fact, often work with other students. 93% that working with others helps them learn. This is wonderful for us to see, of course, as we think about collaboration. Then we had to figure out a way for, well, Kristen, Kristen had to figure out a way for our families to be able to reflect on student collaboration. And she did, and found that 90% of our parents and guardians felt that our school was honoring and expecting their child to work with others, and that that has been valuable. 90% also indicated that their child has learned at least some about how to get along with other students. In her observations, she noted that, she noted students working in groups with different students, noted those students often asking each other questions, helping one another figure things out, and the teachers encouraging students to share during their individual activities and be collaborative. With regard to communication, another of our four Cs that we work so hard on at North Park, our students reported that 91%, 91% agreed that they have had the chance to express their thoughts. 93% agree that they've been able to choose how they share their ideas. And then parents indicated, at a rate of 91%, that they believe North Park is expecting their child to be a good communicator and that that's valuable. 85% said that their child has learned at least some about how to express his or her thoughts. And with regard to a teacher report, teachers say that they are given opportunities to communicate in many different ways throughout the day, and students have opportunities to share ideas with each other and the community and other teachers. Looking at creativity, another of our four Cs, students report that they, that 89% of them had, had the chance to create things in class. 92% felt like trying new things has helped them learn. Parents, at a rate of 88%, agreed that our school is honoring their child's creativity and that that has been valuable. And Ms. Dillon observed that most tasks required reasoned judgment based on some evidence and examining different viewpoints, and that some tasks ask students to create a product test and, to create a product and then test and refine that product to optimize results. The last of our four Cs is critical thinking. Students presented at a rate of 99% that they felt like it's okay to make mistakes in class. And for those of us, this just makes us so very happy, right? When we know that sometimes kids are just so very eager to give us the right answer. We love that they're also feeling really comfortable to make mistakes at school. Parents noted at a rate of 93% that the focus on problem solving has been valuable for their child. 90% of our families said that their child has learned at least some about how to find answers to questions, and 88% that their child has learned at least some about different ways to solve problems. And our observer noted that students choose different ways to solve problems, but they must show their process when they do that, and that students can fail or make mistakes and try again. And then finally, with regard to overall satisfaction, on the left, you'll see the pie chart that responds to the question, where students respond to the question of being in school making me more excited, or being in the studio, pardon me, making them more excited to come to school. So 94% of our students agree with that statement, that being in a learning studio helps them feel more excited to come to school. Our families, parents and guardians noted that their children want them to know what's happening in school. 93% of our families said that. 91% of them said that their child is excited about what he or she is learning at school. 88% of our families indicated that their child prefers learning in a learning studio. And then another 85% of our families indicated that they would like their child to continue having a similar learning experience for next year, which is this year.
Which we did, thank you.
Sure, thank goodness.
So we have a couple of parent testimonial videos that we'd like to share with you.
The first is by a guy you'll probably recognize. His son was on the drums tonight. This is David Keether. He's had several children, currently has one at North Park, Sophie Keether. And this is what he has to say.
He also attended North Park himself.
The way this desk is confined, as I look at it, is the way a child is going to be defined and confined by the desk. If you are able to get up from the desk, move and, and interact with other people and actually think outside of the box other than sitting inside the box, everybody's going to win.
That was not scripted.
And then the second parent testimony that we'd like to share with you is Alita Abdullah. This family is new to us. They currently, or last year, they relocated from Georgia to Minnesota. They have quickly become a really important part of our community. Alita is our new PTA president. She has a third grader, a preschooler, and a kindergartner at our school, and has a brand-new infant at home as well. And then her husband, Shakir Abdullah, is the Vice President for the Office of Equity and Diversity at the University of Minnesota, and has been kind enough to volunteer his time to work with us at North Park around racial equity.
School is great. This is what he will say to his grandparents, this is what he would say to his cousins, this is what he would say to anyone who asked him about school. "How do you like school?" "I love it, it's great, we're learning this, we're planting this, we're going to this place for a field trip." He's excited about being here at North Park. He's excited about being in the learning studio, and he has really grown a lot in just the short time that he's been here. And to me, that, that does my heart good.
So in a nutshell, Dr. Bardell, or Chair Bardell, sorry I let you down, we didn't hit the 90-minute mark. Unless there are a lot of questions, whom I know that, that Board Member Lee always likes questions, so.
Well, we'll let it slide this time. Any questions? Obviously, good stuff happening over at North Park. Questions, comments?
Just a comment, I'm relieved that so many people love the learning studios. So that's a big step that you took, and you took risks, and it seems to be paying off really well.
Thank you.
Again, I'll just say, thanks for all the hard work. You guys always do a great job. And, you know, I said it before, if you can get a kid excited, and it will generate into the, into the parent. So getting kids excited about school is, I think, is key, and you guys seem to be doing it. So congratulations, a good job.
Thank you, thank you for your support.
Always.
And I certainly would echo that. Outstanding job, and thanks for sharing the, the parent testimonials too. Very, very inspiring, actually. Thanks.
Thanks. Before I take off, I'd like to offer, on behalf of the North Park community, gratitude to both Scott and Missy. It seems like not too long ago that your children are running the hallways at North Park, but thank you so much for your service to our district, to North Park, and to our kids. And, and I would assume you can pass a background check, so there are openings for volunteers at North Park. But I know, I really hope to see you, to see you all around, and thank you so much for all the support that you've shown us over the years. It's meant a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks, we appreciate it. Got three of your, three of your graduate back there. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, next on our agenda this evening, the board will be presented with information on the police liaison contract. And this evening, we have Bill Holmgren with us, our Director of Finance and Operations.
Chair Bardell, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly. Yes, tonight, I have a, I have included in your packet the new contract for our liaison officers that we work with as a partnership with the city of Columbia Heights. We have both a liaison officer at our high school and at our middle school over at Columbia Academy. The contract you have before you is, pervatum is exactly the same words in the contract. We haven't changed anything except in the end, when you look at the, the amount that's going to be charged. Small increase, about 2%, and that just covers the cost of those officers. And you can see that they aren't charging us for the whole year. We only pay for nine months of those two officers' time. I will bring this back to you in January to take action on it. Any questions?
Any questions for Bill? All right, I think we're good, Bill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And now, it looks like you're on our agenda for our truth and taxation hearing.
Yes, good evening. We get to have fun talking about budgets and taxes.
Pay attention out there.
I guess just a quick, just a quick shout-out to anybody in the, in the audience that wants to ask any questions during the hearing. There are some cards in the back table. If you have a question, please fill that card out and bring it on up. Again, once a year, we talk about our levy. It will be, and we actually presented actually several times this fall, more than we usually do. We've talked about this, I think, four times already. But tonight's the official night that we take action on our levy. Again, when we are talking about what we're doing here in Columbia Heights, at the Columbia Heights School District, our mission is really to create worlds of opportunity for every learner. That is really the backbone of everything that we work on. And when we're looking at the core values, we look at, really, the community's a big piece here. Because we're asking the community to, to partner with us, to put the funds in place to take care of the programming that we have for our students. So tonight during our tax hearing, we're going to, three things we need to do. First of all, we need to discuss the current budget, and we're going to present the pay 2015 tax levy, and then allow time for any questions from the audience if there are any. It's actually nice to see an audience here because usually, there's not anybody.
Right.
So, thank you. Now, when we talk about our budgets, the main indicators we look at are, of course, our enrollment, because they drive all our revenues, and what the state legislature does with us every single year. And then we'll talk specifically about the changes we see in our revenues and expenditures for the year that we just started. Again, one of the main indicators is our enrollment. And you can see that enrollment since 2009 has been growing. Very excited about that. This past year was actually over 3%. Again, this year, we have a small increase, not as, not as big as you're seeing here, but right now, we're holding up just, just a few students, but we're not, we're not going down. And that's good news. This past spring, the state legislature did something they haven't, they hardly ever do, and that's that they actually changed some of the formula allowance... do, and that's that they actually changed some of the formula allowances for school districts in the off-budget year. If you remember, this year we had to put some new teacher evaluation in place. We have some funds to pay for part of that. Of course, it's not nearly not what we need, but it's in the right direction. Our LEP students, we're getting another year of support for them. The formula allowance, we got another half a percent. And again, this is very good, because we didn't see it coming. School lunches, we had some changes in our school lunches. Now, whether you're free or reduced, these students get a free lunch. Our school readiness, which was really our pre-K program, we have some new revenue, and also our early childhood family education. So these were all very positive things that we didn't plan on. It really helped us with our budget. Okay, when we look at now, the revenue pieces, I guess I would want to just point out some of the bigger pieces that changed, that we didn't, that we didn't plan on. First of all, we get an ACCFC grant. This is a grant out of Anoka County that we hadn't had the year before. LEP revenue is generating us another sixty-six thousand. The teacher evaluation was at a hundred and thirty. Just to give you an idea of what this covers for what our costs are, it is costing us about two-hundred-and-fifty to do this. But this is money that we hadn't planned on before this. The new Formula Aid was four-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand. And of course, this is the first year that we have our kindergarten totally covered for our all-day, everyday kindergarten. So this was seven-hundred-thousand that we had actually been subsidizing this program over the last ten years, and this is a yearly cost. Compensatory was up a little bit. As you know, we do have a high-free, reduced count, and that's what generates our compensatory dollars. Pension adjustment, about fifteen years ago, when the state kind of stepped in to help TRA, they decided that school districts were going to help pay that cost, and we have, we had a negative adjustment of a hundred-and-forty-seven thousand every year since then. So this is the first year we don't have to pay that back. So that was in our favor. And then special ed cross-subsidy, this is a new piece of revenue that we haven't had either. They're trying to look at what our cross-subsidy is and give us a little money back. Of course, our cross-subsidy is close to four million dollars, this is hardly a drop, but it is something more than we had. So, and I want to move over to the expenditure side, and this is, it always surprises me every year when you look at, look at our current staffing and just the small increases that we give our staff and what that really adds up with the number of employees that we have here at Columbia Heights. You can see that just the staffing roll of costs are over one-point-one million dollars, and the benefits that go along with that is about seven-hundred thousand. And this happens every year in and out. So when we talk about next year's budget, you can expect these numbers to be very close again, what we're looking at. Teacher valuation, like I said, costing us about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Our work comp gave us a little bit of a hit that we didn't plan on this last year. We have a hundred thousand increase in our work comp. Severance, as you know, we had a, we have an OPEB trust that we put money aside in. Before we developed that OPEB trust, there was this bigger pool of money that was for severance. We took the OPEB trust out, and there was a few hundred thousand dollars left over, which we've been using for severance over the last, at least since I've been here. But we did use that up this year. So this is something that goes back into our budget that we haven't had to do for a while, and that's estimated at a hundred thousand. Trend precaution costs, we got a small increase, and that's built into that contract. But you can see, we had about a two-point-three million-dollar increase in our revenues, and of course, we had two-point-three in our expenditures. And one nice thing, though, this past year is we didn't have to have a lot of layoffs or cuts because of the new dollars that we did receive. So that was great news for our staff. Now, this gets a little busy, but just kind of quickly flow through this, I know you've all seen it, but when we look at our budget that we just started here in July, our unassigned revenues are about forty-and-a-half million dollars, with expenditures about the same. Our gifted and talented, even though we do spend a lot more than the forty-four thousand in gifted and talented, many, many areas in our buildings, this is the actual dollars that the state of Minnesota gives us to use for gifted and talented. Staff development, after many, I shouldn't say many, but there was four, I think, four years where we didn't get any staff development from the state of Minnesota. This is back in place now. See, we had a small carryover, and we get about four-hundred thousand dollars to use for that. Our grants run about two-point-eight million dollars, in and out each year. Our deferred maintenance runs about two-hundred thousand, and even, it's nice that it's there, because it seems like when we start the year, this is more of our, this is kind of like our emergency fund. You know, when things happen, break, and we have to fix it, this is where the money comes out of. Capital dollars, about seven-hundred thousand dollars we get yearly for this. Our health and safety, I guess, don't be concerned about the red, negative numbers. Health and safety, our projects that the state mandates us to do, and what happens, we end up doing the projects, and then we levy the next year to get the money back. So even though that is a negative amount, we get that a year later. But it always runs negative, because the next year, it's the same story. So it just kind of sits there. So our total restricted, you see that we have about four-and-a-half million dollars, but our total general fund in a whole is about forty-five million dollars. Now, again, it gets a little busy, so I think you can sort of see what's on there, but we just, we touched on the general fund. Food service, we have now hit two million dollars going in and out of this fund. As our enrollment has grown, we have a lot more meals that we're serving, which is generating the more revenue. Community education, actually, if you remember back to the audit presentation that you received last meeting, the actual dollars running through this fund has really grown over the last four to five years, but now we're up one-and-a-half million. Now, you see the building fund, this is the money we borrowed last spring to do the Valley View project, so we don't see any revenue coming in now, in this new year, but we'll be spending most of it. So a big change in that fund balance, we'll be buying it way down. Debt service, this is, you see that negative change in fund balance. This is because we have more than enough funds in our debt service fund to make our payments, so this money actually goes back to our community members. Flex account, this is something we do for our employees, the money in and out for their flex accounts. Dental insurance, this has slowly been growing, this fund balance now is at a hundred-and-fifty-two thousand. We're self-insured with our dental. We haven't had any increases for our dental insurance for our employees since I've been here, and that's over five years now. Student accounting, our activity counts, this is the money that's generated in fundraising on a yearly basis, in and out. And then, of course, here's our OPEB trust. We're still over, we're overfunded with the dollars that we need to have set aside for our future. And what this money goes for is the health portion of the severance of our employees as they retire. Okay, so that's what we're working on right now. I will bring a revised budget to you very soon. Actually, we'll talk about budget again in January, and we'll actually bring a revised budget back to you in February. Because remember, this budget that we did, that we okayed way back in June, you know, we look at what we needed, and now we know exactly who we've hired and so forth. So we kind of fine-tune that budget. So that'll be coming. Now, we're going to shift over and talk about taxes for the paid 2015 calendar year. Remember that these tax dollars that are collected are used for our fifteen, sixteen school year. Now, I just wanted to touch on a couple of things. You know, we always talk about it's our levy limitation and certification. And I think it's important to note that when we talk about schools, it truly is a limitation. We're not like a county or a city where we can look at, well, we're going to need another two percent to pay our employees, so we're going to raise the tax rate enough to collect those funds. We can't do anything like that. We are, every formula is based on how many students we have, and whatever that adds up to be, that's what we can levy. We don't have any leeway to increase our revenue in any way. And just for a kind of refresher, when we talk about net tax capacity, what they're talking about here is a residential home, the class rate's one percent. So if your, if your home is worth, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, you could be taxed up to a max of a thousand dollars for that, for that home. Okay? And remember, there used to be credits tied to all that, and just a couple of years ago, they changed how that, how the tax credits worked, and everybody was really confused. And some people got a lot of nice, big credits, and some dent. But what happens now is the first seventy-nine thousand dollars of your home's value is really not taxed, but what they do is they take point-four percent of that, and if you're, so if your house is worth seventy-nine thousand, you'd actually get a three-hundred-and-four-dollar credit. But what happens as it goes forward, nine-tenths of a percent comes back off of that for every thousand that goes up. So by the time you get to four-hundred-and-thirteen thousand value on your home, there's no tax credit left. It goes away. And then when we talk about variables, it really, like we talked about, there really is no variables when we talk about the, that school tax levy, except for maybe in health and safety. Because what health and safety kind of runs in a three-year cycle. We have three years to take care of projects that have been looked at or told us that we need to take care of, or mandated to take care of. So sometimes, Tom and I work, if we see an increase come in our tax levy, we work on this, or maybe we'll do a couple less projects this year, and do more next year, to try to level that out. So this is really the only place that we have any type of leeway to try to level our tax levy in a year's time. Now, back to enrollment, it's just the history of enrollment. You can see, again, that we're running about one percent, except for this past year, which was a lot higher, but this has really helped our programming going forward. Our net tax capacity, as the recession came in, you'll see from 2008, we've had negative pieces to our net tax capacity against the property values in our community. But one thing to point out here, if you look back in 2008, sales ratio was at ninety-seven point seven. And what this ratio talks about is what this county has assessed your house at, and what you can actually sell your house at. And what, and when you have under a hundred percent, they're selling for higher than what they're valued. So back in 2008, your assessed value was only ninety-seven percent of what you could sell the house at. So actually, so nine, ten, eleven, twelve, people were actually selling their houses for less than what they were appraised at with the county. And now in 2013, and we're always lagging back, and it's hard to get the numbers, they're always lagging, but it's the first time now we're seeing it go back, where people are selling their houses, if they're selling, for a higher value than what it's appraised at with the county. But of course, the Department of Revenue and their, I won't say, but, they're saying, well, if your house is really worth more than what we have appraised at, we should be able to tax you more. So that's really what happens here. They take the net tax capacity of your home, they divide it by the sales ratio to get an adjusted tax tax capacity. So because of that, now you see actually an increase in the value of the housing, I mean, barely, by the small increase in 2013. Okay, and I'm going to run through the levy pieces, in our, mainly in our general fund. The student achievement levy was an old levy that we brought back on, in 2014 was the first year, it was back, that's the old general education. It's called student achievement, but it's the old general education levy, based on the number of students that we have on hand. Equity aid, this is an aid that helps student, helps school districts that don't have the ability to pass really high levies, like in the West and the Southwest metro, where they have lots of operating levies, well over fifteen-hundred dollars per student. Of course, we don't have that. Because of that, we get a little bit of equity aid. Of course, we have to levy it, but we do get a little money to help even the playing field between districts. Our referendum dollars, you see, actually down a little bit, but the reason that is, we're getting some more aid. So back what we talked about last year, is our referendum dollars are exactly the same, even though, you know, we talked about it being three pieces, then it really is only two pieces, but here's the two pieces. So we have the referendum and then the local optional revenue, which is four-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars of our referendum. So that's our general fund, down a little bit. We look at our designated funds. Integration, you see, last year, we really didn't levy anything. This is actually an adjustment from the year before. The state legislature forgot to keep that in our authority to levy, so that five-hundred-and-twenty-three is really two years' worth of levy for our integration levy. So big change, but half of that's only a one-time change. Our safe schools, this is the money we use to help pay for our liaison officers we just talked about. Career and technical, actually, is the first year in twenty, that we actually see an increase in that. That was locked in, we're seeing a small increase. Not a lot, but it certainly helps us with our budget. And then reemployment, this is just straight costs that we run, that come back and we levy after we have the costs. So our total designated area is up five-hundred. Operating capital. Operating capital is based on the age of our buildings and the number of students. You can see that that's flat. Health and safety, up a little bit, taking care of the projects we need to take care of. Deferred maintenance, it runs right around two-hundred. It's funny how this formulas change a few thousand every year. Lease levy, this doesn't, this includes our gyms out front, and it includes the new payment now on Valley View, and of course, it includes District 916 and our TIES membership with them. And the big change, of course, is here, in our capital project lease levy, I don't know why I put lease in there, a million dollars. And the reason it's not exactly a million dollars is because they pick up tax rate. So actually, what'll happen next year, we'll get a levy adjustment of five-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars negative. Okay, move on to community ed. Again, this is based on the population, and it's based on a census, so this only changes really every ten years, when we see a change in our census, so that basically what you see is really flat. What happens here every year is we get a little more aid back and forth. And the same with early childhood, we're really not getting less, there's actually quite a bit new funds going into early childhood. And the school age care, these are the actual dollars that we use for after-school programming for our special ed students. Abatement, again, what abatement is, is really when we, every year we can tax, like in our debt service levy, we can tax a hundred-and-five percent of what we need to make the payments. Sometimes taxpayers don't pay all their taxes, and we're short, and there's an abatement process for us to make that up, and years after. Debt service is down. If you remember, two reasons. First reason is, two years ago, we resold the bonds, we're saving a lot of interest on those bonds, and the excess dollars in that fund, again, we're giving, that seventy-eight thousand is going back to our taxpayers as an under levy. So, this year we do have a large increase, and it's all based back on that million dollars that we raised because of the question, we asked for the capital project levy. So we're seeing a twenty percent, twenty-seven percent increase in our general fund. Community service, we're seeing about a six percent decrease in our debt redemption fund at a little over three-and-a-half. So we have a total increase this year of sixteen. Without that new levy, remember, it was right at two-and-a-half percent. I always like to look back and what's really happened with our levy. If you look back to 2001, we actually had a twelve-million-dollar levy here in the school district. This came way down during the Ventura years, where they, he said that the state can pay for everything. So that's what they did, and of course, the state then went really in bad shape for a while. But in 2006, we talked about this during the levy questions, all the presentations we did, but in 2005, that, that big increase, that was when we put the operating levy on. 2008, nine was the extra money we had to levy to take care of the fire suppression in the high school, and then in eleven and twelve, that was a state, state of Minnesota problem, we had a big tax shift. And then we came kind of back down to our level spot in fourteen, back down to where we were in 2006. But of course, now the new levy pushes that back up. So we're right back to where we were the year before. So are there any questions?
They're still awake.
Doesn't look like it.
I have a comment, though. Looks like without the, when you take out the levy that was approved for the building, our levy's only increasing about two-hundred thousand dollars. Is that correct? That's what I see.
Yes, yes. And which is about two-and-a-half percent.
Right, which is close to inflation.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, please bear with me. I was at the 916 meeting, and they had a presentation about, they had the presentation, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble today, about the new GASBY rules, about putting in the
unfunded liabilities. Can you give us a little synopsis of what that's going to look like? Because I know that the district themselves, we have absolutely no control over it, because the legislature is in charge of that item that we're going to have to list for our constituents.
Yeah. Actually, the rule's coming from GASBY, it's not coming from the state of Minnesota. It's an accounting rule, as a general accepted accounting rule, that any liability that the school district would have in the future should be included in our books. And both TRA- And both TRA and PERA are underfunded at this, at this time. So what is being mandated to us a year from now, when we do our, uh, our CAFR or our, um, annual report, any liability from TRA and PERA, um, that are on the books will have to show up on our books. Even though we have no control, um, we don't make any decisions on how much money is taken on anybody's check or how much money is being deposited in these funds or how they're being managed. I, you know, my, my opinion is I think it's still TRA's and PERA, PERA's responsibility to take care of that is really not, because we're not going to have to fund that either, it's just going to sit on our books as a negative. But it is, it sounds like it's going to be a pretty big number, we'll have, it sounds like we'll get these numbers about February. But where it might, in lots of cases, school district actually won't have, uh, positive fund balance. You'll actually have a negative fund balance because of that liability that sits on the books. So we'll talk about that every year and talk about, you know, what that is and where our fund balance really is. But yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna look ugly in our books.
I only bring it up because I think it's going to, um, shock some people, so we should probably get that information out as soon as possible.
Yeah, I, I, I went to a meeting, um, about three weeks ago, uh, I met with PERA and TRA, the, the actual two managers of those funds. And they said we should have those numbers in February. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. I think that, uh, concludes our mandated truth and taxation hearing. Correct, Bill?
Yes, it does.
Great. All right. Next, action items, two items. Hang in there with us. Um, our first action item is, uh, the two thousand fifteen levy. Board will be asked to approve the pay twenty fifteen levy as presented.
Yes, um, as, as I presented the dollars, and actually I put another handout in your, um, in your packet. So you can see the numbers broke down a little, little bit. But yeah, that's levy that we need to pass for next year, um, which is an increase of, um, one point, yeah, about one point two million.
Do I have a motion? Move that forward.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Missy. Any discussion on, uh, twenty fifteen levy? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion is carried.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yep. Last agenda item this evening, uh, board will be asked to approve new suspended deleted courses for twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen school year. Dwayne Burkas.
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. Uh, as you recall, I was here with, uh, Principal Robleski to talk about our deletion, addition and suspension of courses for the next school year at the high school. And, um, here tonight, uh, to ask your approval for the deletion of the ninth grade leadership class and the addition of the college and career readiness support class. There will be a, an, there is also, as you know from our presentation, a list of courses that will be, we propose to be suspended for the next school year, but then we'd be looking at, uh, hopefully reinstating those for the following school year.
All right, do I have a motion? Move that forward.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ted, second by John, any, uh, discussion? We, yeah, go ahead.
I just want to make a comment, it looks like we're not, we're not abandoning leadership skills at all, but we're focusing more on college and career readiness and the life skills that are necessary to, to be college and career ready. Is that correct?
Yes, I think that's a good way of saying it. We have the life skills that we have really embraced as part of our college and career readiness, um, uh, that we feel is important, those benchmarks and those life skills together, we feel are where our focus should be. So it's really shifting of the focus from, uh, as our district has changed as well in terms of our identification as the college benchmarks and the life skills as our key, um, focus areas.
And I've seen from research that life skills actually play a very important part in being college and career ready, more so than, than originally thought. So I'm glad to see that.
Yes, I, I think the life skills that are identified there, if we can, um, encourage our kids to develop in those areas, we will, they will see benefits up for a lifetime in them.
Any further discussion, questions, Dwayne? Again, we went through this in detail, um, already, so. All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. All right. If we must, we go to board topics. Just a comment here, um, before I lose total control of the rest of the evening. Are there any board topics that we need to discuss legitimately? What's that?
A wild group out there.
I know, I see, you know, they're just chomping at the bit here. All right, with that, um, I'll cede control of the rest of the agenda.
Well, as you know, this is the celebration of service, um, of two excellent school board members who will be leaving our ranks at the end of this evening. And, um, we would like to take a pause to reflect and enjoy them one last time. So, um, there has been a request, um, by board member Missy Lee to speak on behalf of Scott Bardell. And so I would call on member Lee to begin her comments.
If I can maintain myself. They all out there, no, I'm not going to be able to do this very well.
Be nice.
Um, I just wanted, I, I asked Superintendent Kelly, uh, to, uh, that I would be able to speak about you. Because, um, you and I have been through a lot together. I have a lot to say about Scott Bardell and not a lot of time, so I'm going to make it brief. If you look at our values in this community and you look at the community excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage and innovation, that speaks of Scott Bardell. I am saddened to see him leave this board and it is very, um, eye-opening for me that people don't see the person that this man, that this man is. He is one of the fairest, the most honest people that I have met. He has always looked at this community through the eyes of being even. He has always looked at it for children. And he has always been there for anyone that would ever come forward. I, him and I may not have always agreed on some things, but he always listened and he always took the time. I have been very, very proud to have served with you. You sat as vice chair with me, we went through some pretty tough times. But Scott is the one person that kept me center court. We had a work session not long ago, uh, several months ago, we talked about trust. And we talked about, I spoke very definitely on how I felt about trust. And I can honestly tell you that this is the board member that I would trust with anything. And he has shown that in the community, in to children, he's got two fabulous kids and a wonderful wife. And he has shared them with us. But this man is a loss for this community to have him lead this board. And, but he is on to, I'm sure, bigger and better things, and I have a feeling you might see him again. And I hope so, I hope you come back and, and continue on the board in a couple of years. I, I, you know I will encourage you. Uh, thank you for everything that you've done and everything you will do in the future. You are one of the best board members that I have worked with and I really do truly appreciate everything that you've done. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
We're not quite done with Scott yet. And Missy, thank you for those.
Can I adjourn?
Thank you for those kind and heartfelt words. We, uh, would entertain comments from other board members if they wish to make them at this time. In addition, I had a request from a former board member, member Keith Roberts, uh, to read into the record because he could not be here tonight, some comments on each of the board members. And I guess I'm going to beg the chair's forgiveness. There's not much you can do about it.
No.
And I'm going to ask member Roberts, would you like to step forward and read first what you had for Scott and then later for Missy?
Do you saw my ladder?
Of course.
Thanks, Will, for having a long meeting, I was able to get here. Yeah, thanks. Does my address and all that, I got?
Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak here, Kathy, and, uh, to talk about these two board members. Scott, thank you and congratulations. We two worked together a long time on the board, several times when you went off the board and, uh, we voted to bring you back because of those things that Missy said. We knew that you had integrity and we knew that you were honest and we knew that you represented the community. And when I look at Scott's tenure as a, a board member, the thing that comes to my mind is breakfast at the elementary schools. Because of my career, I could never make those morning things. And so Scott was always at those things representing the board, along with other board members. But we'd always see that picture of Scott, like with an apron and stuff. And, uh, and I think that picture is indicative of the commitment that Scott made to this community and made to this school. You should be proud of your accomplishments, what you've done in this community, and it was my pleasure to work with you, Scott.
Thanks, Keith, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments from board members? Otherwise, we'll move to the presentation, but I'd want to make sure that if anyone wants to affirm anything, they certainly have the time to do it.
I'd like to take just a quick second, and it's going to be to both of you because I feel the same about both of you, then I don't have to, you don't have to listen to me talk twice. Uh, in the short time that I've been able to work with both of you on the board, uh, you guys have been phenomenal mentors. You've, um, given me really good guidance, you've set me straight on more than one occasion. And I have a ton of respect for both of you and, uh, you'll both be missed. But for you, Scott, um, it's truly been a pleasure to work with you and you, Missy, too.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, and, and is there anyone else? If not, I would just like to say in closing, um, that Scott to me, um, really means servant leadership. He's been a rock, um, in both as the position of chair and as a board member. He's given to the students quietly for years, supported many initiatives personally and professionally. Always been there and I feel, just as I feel about Missy, but we'll get to her in a minute, that she really, he really cares about the kids. And he lives the mission and he will be missed. At this time, however, we are going to continue the celebration because Vice Chair Larkin, um, will be presenting, um, the presentation of Years of Service Award, which is right back here. And Casey, for pictures, would you rather have it over here or over here? Well, great, let's, let's do it right over here by the, by the five, the core values, so we can get that in shot.
Do we stage it? Better smile.
I didn't get any script, so I'm just going to go off and look at the, the, actually, I'll show it to the group first in case you don't get a chance to see Scott's. This is his appreciation of this service with us. Uh, the plaque says Scott Bardell, January two thousand five, December two thousand eight, uh, January two thousand ten, December two thousand fourteen. And I would like to, on the behalf of the entire board, thank you for all of your service to the district. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Thank you very much. Um, thank you, I appreciate it. It's, uh, it's been good, it's never been about me, it's always been about, uh, this district, so thank you.
Thank you, Scott. To continue on, we now come to the part in the celebration where we are going to honor member Missy Lee. And to speak first about her is Chair Scott Bardell.
All right. I had to write it down because I knew I'd go off script. So I did something a little bit different, so I, I, uh, hope you appreciate it. Missy Lee has served this district for the past twenty years. I've had the honor of serving with her on the board for the last ten years, so I can't claim that I truly know the real Missy Lee or have the whole story on Missy Lee's accomplishments during this whole time. However, after some thought and some extensive research on the internet and social media sites.
Oh, Lord.
I came up with a few words that I believe describe Missy Lee. The first word is mother. Above all else, I believe Missy Lee is most proud of being a mother, not only to her three familiar children, um, but also to many more of quote, "her" end quote, kids from our community that she's nurtured and mentored throughout the past twenty years. Second word is independent. This word is an obvious descriptor to anyone who knows or has worked with Missy. Missy is independent and she is not constrained by the thoughts or beliefs of others. She finds her own way, whether she chooses the easy, smooth way or the slogging, bumpy way, which is much harder but way more interesting. During my time on the board, she maintained this independence in order to serve the best interests of all the children in the district and not just the interests of the individual squeaky wheels. Third word, you'll be shocked, strong. I think Missy is a strong person and that she has strong beliefs in doing what is good or right for the kids in this district. I think Missy is also strong for persevering through spending twenty years on a public school board, which according to my extensive research could be considered a form of punishment in some other non-school related societies. Fourth word, shocker, stubborn. Wait a minute. Another word for stubborn is tenacious. Missy stubbornly or tenaciously stood for what she believed in while, while a board member in this district. Such beliefs resonated with community members who elected her to her position as a board member five times. It could also mean that many community members studied some other non-school related societies and wanted Missy confined here in this room most Monday or Tuesday nights of the school year for as many years as possible. The fifth word is yourself. I believe you have always been yourself, meaning being authentic and true to yourself and your beliefs. You always tried to do the right thing or find the right path for children and community members of this district. You did not pretend to be someone or something that you were not. In being yourself, you were rewarded and honored by the community by being elected to the board five times. The sixth word is leader. When I chose leader, I don't mean it in terms of having a title or position. What I mean is a leader in terms of being a person who others look to for guidance and being a person who is trusted by others for opinion and thoughts. In my experience on the board, when you spoke, people tend, when Missy spoke, people tended to listen. The people may not have agreed with you sometimes or at all, but at least they listened. Seventh word is endurance. Serving for twenty years on a school board really means serving on at least ten new boards since there would have been a board elections every two years during that time. Over the past twenty years, I am sure Missy has relied on her inner strength to endure and show endurance toward facing challenges and opportunities on the board and in life with courage and resiliency. The eighth and last word for me tonight is equality. I believe that Missy has carried herself on this board for the last ten years and probably the last twenty years as an equal. What I mean by equality or being equal is believing and understanding that she was a peer and on the same footing as all of us on the board. I believe she treated all of us fairly in an unbiased manner. She gave board members praise when it was warranted and she similarly gave any board members, quote, friendly advice, end quote, when any board member displayed behavior inconsistent with standards expected of a board member. Importantly, she held herself to those same standards. But as I recall, Missy wasn't altogether thrilled when I offered her, quote, some friendly advice. However, it is possible I could be remembering that incorrectly, but who knows? These are just some of the words I came up with to describe Missy Lee and her role as a board member and a person. I am sure there are many other words that could be, be used to describe her. I am also sure that there are many other people who could describe her better than I. I think she thinks that she is fortunate that those people who know her much better than I are not here tonight. I could be wrong about that, but we'll never know. Missy, I congratulate you on your long career as a board member of this district. I am certain that this district, as well as the community, has benefited from your serving on this board. This district will miss. This district will miss you. Some others in non-school-related societies will wonder where you are and what you're doing on Tuesday nights. Going forward, however, I wish you success in whatever you do. Congratulations.
Well done, but we're not done yet. Thank you, Scott. If former board member Keith Roberts would like to come forward and speak on Member Lee's behalf.
Thank you. Well, I was prepared, in case I couldn't be here, because I was doing an activity night, and, do you know I teach, I'm a teacher, I teach eighth grade? Okay, I was just checking if you knew that. What I want to say to you, Missy, is that when you look at your tenure on this board, I think it's easy to see that your heart print is across this district and this community is incredibly pronounced. We can look all around and see where the impact that you have made has left a permanent mark. Please be proud of all those things you did as a board member. I am very proud of you for that passion, for hard work, and it was always for the kids, and that was always your focus. I look at things like synergy, the building improvements, the curricular advancements, perhaps even our board's crowning achievement, that we worked together for the Highlander Center, and it pales compared to what your, my, and this board's greatest accomplishment truly is, and that's those students who walk across the stage every June, collecting the gateway to a lifetime of success. You made that happen. Hundreds of kids' hands we shook, as we saw the fruit of that faith, hard work, and love for kids bring forth. You modeled that in every decision that you made. Although, I would be remiss at this moment to not recollect on some of those wonderful moments we shared as a board. For example, there was that time in Orlando with the card key fiasco, or the dumble ride at Walt Disney World. On a more serious note, the incredible visit we had to a high school in Chicago that sat amid some of the worst poverty and violence in the city, but graduates 100% of its students who all go on to college. Witnessing technology that we could only dream of having in our district, and working hard to make sure those dreams come true. Our efforts of collaboration with Cube to bring our conversation nationally, to learn about students hundreds of miles away, only to find that they were so similar to the students walking in our hallways. We learned how to make a penny go a long way, and we learned that if you work hard enough, and you believed in kids enough, you can make all those dreams come true. You never once veered from that path. When I left the board, you said to me you learned so much from me. I learned a lot from you. Passion, commitment, collaboration, and you were never ready just to sit and ride the time. You wanted change, and you got it with your incredible work ethic and a sense of pride. You, to me, are simply amazing. I know there's much in our future, we talked about consulting, we know that working for positive change is good, not only for the community, but for us as well. I have been so lucky to have had those years to work with you, to get to know you, and have you as my friend, my little sister.
Thanks, Keith. Before we get to the presentation of the box, is there anybody else at the board level that would like to make a comment? Remember Paul McCall?
I would like to make a brief comment, I'd love to say so much more, but I think the one thing, Missy, that you've brought to this board, is you've brought your heart, and you wear it on your sleeve at every meeting. And I don't know who's going to fill that really vital role on the board, but I really want to thank you for your passion. Thank you.
Others?
If not, I'm going to be very brief, but I feel that I would just like to thank Missy for being a dynamic leader. Her motto has always been, it's about the kids. And not, as Scott alluded to, just her kids, but all the kids. And I think if you look out into the audience tonight, and you look at young adults who have sat through a consent agenda, an information agenda, an action agenda, a truth in taxation here, and they are still here, is a visible testament to where your fingerprints have been in this district. It's about the kids. And many kids in this district tonight, and in the past, have been touched by that passion. You've also been a trusted school board member and a chair. And I have to confess that I would not be in this chair tonight if someone hadn't marched upstairs to teaching and learning and said, "You can do this job. Believe in yourself, I believe in you." And, and I, she says, "Just apply," and I did. And it has been one of the greatest opportunities of my life, so thank you for that. And I'm going to stop there, but I would just like to say both to Missy and to Scott, that even when we turn back this program tonight to you, and you gavel us out, that it would be my hope that you would know that both the spirit and your leadership will be missed. Thank you. With that, we have the official presentation of the box.
Again, Missy, on the board, on behalf of the entire board, we'd like to thank you for your many years of service.
That does conclude our formal program, but I am sure as-
Can I say something?
You're going to say something.
I'm going to actually say something, can you believe that?
I am surprised but happy. Very good, she was not sure. Oh, John just said that's because she wants the last word.
This is, this, this was a really hard decision for me, to, to leave the board. For the simple reason is what sits in the audience right now. And they're my kids, every one of them. I said this from the very beginning, I have three kids that were my main investment into this district. I had a wonderful extension come into our home as my other kid, and I've had even another come into my home as another. And I love all of you very much, but to the rest of my kids, you all know who you are, and you know you have my heart. But I want to say thank you to this board, I want to say thank you to this district and this community for allowing me to serve, and that's what I've done. It has made me a better person, it has made me understand a lot of things that prior I didn't understand. And like I say, it's been a really hard decision for me, but I have never been more proud of a community or a, a group of staff, staffers and administration that really, really have pulled me to the places that I've wanted to be. And one of them, like I said tonight, is sitting and listening how this place is, is the buzz around the state. But that doesn't, it isn't because of me, it isn't because of this board, it isn't because of administration, it's because of the kids that are, that make the determination to do what they need to do. I have appreciated being able to serve on this board so much. Keith, thank you so much. It was, it was a heck of a ride, and I don't believe that we're done. Kathy Olson was here tonight, so I do appreciate her, her service in the past and her support. But mainly, Kath, Kathy, I just want to say thank you. And I am glad I made that trek up, that, those steps, because I remember that day I walked in that office and sat down, and you really, you know, you bucked up and said no at first, but, and you have made a huge difference in this community. You have built the bridges that had been burnt, you extended the olive branch, and you brought this community together like no one has in the past. You are truly, truly an amazing leader in this district, and I thank you for everything. And you look around, everything that has happened lately in the last 10 years, that's where it started, and that's where you came in, and we really do appreciate it. We went from rags to riches, and it is true. And it, this has been great, it has been a wonderful ride, like I said, and I do appreciate everyone, but like I've said before, if it's not about the kids, please remember, it's not about anything. It's not about me, it's not about this board, you make the decision because of every one of these children that sit out there and sit in this district. They have my heart, and they will forever have my heart, and this district will too, and I am thankful for the service that I was able to give. And I will end in this as the way that I have before. I don't, from my heart, tears, I love each and every one of you. Thank you.
Heights pride, Missy.
Heights pride.
Heights pride.
Go Heights.
Go Heights. She did it, she made it through, how about another round of applause for her making through her speech? I pass the program back to you, Chair Bardell.
All right. Very tough act to follow. Thank you, Missy.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, thank you, fellow board members, appreciate all your help along the way. With that, thank you very much, and we shall adjourn this meeting at 9:22 PM.